Make a motion to approve.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. We are in workshop and the first item is council education training topics, solid waste landfill, two eight one. Anyone know what two eight one stands for?
He gave it such an exciting name that can't be ignored.
We need reading that.
Yeah, council, one thing that I, I just, while he's getting the PowerPoint up, I asked him to share some of these pictures. This is a picture of the Sartell Robotics team today at Niron, so I just thought you guys might enjoy that. They were there, um, they were all giving gift bags, which is the second picture, if you want to pull that up, that Niron surprised all the kids with, so. Just thought you might enjoy seeing those pictures that were sent my way today, so.
Awesome, that's awesome.
Yeah, very cool, I think, an incredible opportunity for those young adults, so we have appreciated their efforts and all smiles in that picture. Uh, Rob, let's see if the... The clicker is working. Um, and then you're recording. There we go. Okay, council, I'm gonna start at the very beginning because I know that we have new council members, council member elects one here today and one who I know will be watching this. And so I wanna make sure that we give the full history and context to this, so some of this might be a repeat for you, but let's just start at the beginning. This was property owned by Versal Paper Mill along Fourth Avenue South that was then bought by AIM Recycling. It's approximately hundred and sixty-seven acres. As a part of that hundred and sixty-seven acres that AIM owned, there was a sixty-acre parcel that is, has a landfill, an active landfill located on it. AIM attempted, um, at one point, attempted to operate the landfill or at least permit to operate it as a full-scale active demolition landfill. If you've been over in this area, hard to Sartell, you know, beautiful property, it would be a really challenging area to have an active demolition landfill. City denied this attempt due to it not being a permitted use within our code. AIM then filed suit, which went as high as the Supreme Court, kinda went back and forth. Um, there was no court resolution, it bounced back and forth, and then the city was approaching its cap on our insurance coverage for this case. And also, because it was bouncing back and forth, it, you know, at some point had to make a decision of where's the level of confidence on this? And went to the table with AIM and hence negotiated the entire mill district purchase, which included the east side property, fifty-one acres. This is different, this is the hundred and sixty-seven acres on Fourth Avenue South. When we saw the picture of Niron Magnetics, they will be right next door to this property. Um, and so all of that was bought in entirety with, from AIM with the mill site purchase. The landfill is a piece of this hundred and sixty-seven acres, which we have now platted and are, have named Champion Platte. So when you hear the term Champion Platte, we're referring to that hundred and sixty-seven acres, the landfill is a part of it. We worked to get that on the market, um, and to get the large majority of that acreage listed outside of the landfill. We, well, we could sell the landfill, but not many people want to buy a landfill, um, especially with the restrictions that we would impose. Cause we do not want an active, um, full-scale demolition landfill. So it's been listed, you know, obviously you know the Niron Magnetics, we just shared a, a picture of the team that's down there right now today. Um, and as a part of the negotiations with Niron Magnetics, they are purchasing seventy-nine acres of Champion Platte. But it includes a required declaration of restrictions on the landfill parcel. They want to make sure that that landfill is not going to be a full-scale demolition landfill. And have asked for a limitation on certain materials to make sure that it's not highly contaminated materials. And then they also would like to see closure within thirty years. Um, it currently does not limit the cubic yards of waste per year, but some of this will have to, um, be finalized in the due diligence period. Um, and, and this finalization of this declaration of re- restrictions will take place before January twenty-eighth, which is the end of the due diligence period.
Council, one thing I'd add on to that, uh, overview or history there is that the landfill had a conditional use permit from the city, so it was a permitted landfill from the city, conditional use. And it had to be, uh, maintained and operated consistently if it, if it, uh, if the owner failed to maintain and operate it for twelve months. That conditional use would be void. Uh, and that is what really created the opportunity to close it. And so they let it last because of the mill, the fire, all that, and then the, the length it took to get the mill sold. Uh, it was not maintained, and so I wanna, I just wanted to bring that up as like, as we see conditional uses coming from Kerry and team. That's the impact of some of those decisions we make and the restrictions that are within those conditional uses. If we're not inspecting them or maintaining them or documenting them, this likely would be a demolition landfill today in the heart of our city. But thankfully, it was documented and we were able to take action.
Yeah, good recap. Um, so, we now own a, own a landfill. Um, and need to figure out a plan forward for operation of the landfill, it is an active landfill. Um, and then I'll add on to the fact that we have it as a part of the negotiations with Niron Magnetics. So a couple of basics about the landfill so you can get your bearings around what we're dealing with. The current, this is the, this is the, the, um, permit under AIM. There's no property acreage established in the permit except for the disposal area. The conditions were that it was fifty-five acres, the constructed permit, um, footprint of it was thirteen acres with two-point-one of them already closed. I'll show you in a picture what that, where that part is. Three hundred and eighty-two cubic yards in place to date, there's another three hundred thousand cubic yards available. Um, there's a, always a two-hundred-foot buffer that's required, we have a pond leachate system attached to it. There are ten ground monitoring wells, uh, which require monitoring for us annually. Again, as I mentioned, um, there's no contamination in that leachate system, which we're very fortunate, uh, to have. It does have a four-foot compacted clay liner, which is highly desired in the landfill world. Um, and the MPCA is working to move any unlined active landfills to a lined landfill. So it, we know that, that four-foot compacted clay liner is, is highly desired and important. It helps protect that leachate system as well. And then it does direct discharge to our sanities, sanitary sewer. So anything we put in that landfill that goes in that leachate system eventually gets out into our sanitary sewer system. What's in there today, um, i- is primarily paper ash. I mean, if I could summarize it, there are some pictures that we've seen where they've excavated and it literally looks like a, a campfire pit. It is, it's ash. We, we believe that that is primarily what is in there, you know, you can't entirely know it, but they, they are required to report on it. And, and we believe that based on the leachate system and the can, there's no contaminants, we believe it's ash. So when you look here, you see two different pictures, the ultimate design and the permitted design. So the top one is the permitted design, correct? Um, and you see that square in the bottom right-hand corner.
The, the top one is actually the ultimate design.
Or, I'm sorry, ultimate design, and the closed portion is that square in the, the corner. Uh, permitted design is the bottom one. Um, and so for those of you who are a part of maybe the Niron tour, we stood on the top right corner. Um, this is a large mound, it's, it's a huge hill area. You can see on that bottom picture how there's a lot more material in the bottom right corner, that's cause that's the two-point-one acres that is closed. So ultimate design of twenty-seven acres, but, um, really what we're focused on today is the permitted design. The active permit is for thirteen with two-point-one of it already closed. So you're talking about approximately eleven acres remaining for, you can see the, the cubic yards that are remaining capacity there. We have applied for our own MPCA permit, um, separate of the AIM one. They allowed us to kind of renew and live under the, the AIM one temporarily until we could, uh, work through our own MPCA permit. Uh, we have gotten our stormwater discharge permits, those were approved in August. Have we, we haven't gotten the solid waste management plan back yet, but we're expecting in November here, no- nothing yet though. It'll be any day now that we've, we anticipate the solid waste management plan will be coming back, um, for approval from the MPCA that has been submitted. We are seeking permitting for the remaining eleven-point-four acres. The next step in that process is the permit application, you go through a bunch of checklists, you do the complete design. The biggest key item that we really need to hone in on today and make sure we're all in agreement on is that operations plan. Um, and make sure that we're submitting an appropriate operations plan, you submit it all to the MPCA. And then we're five to eight months, um, out from having the actual active permit in hand under the city of Sartell. Financial assurance, we already have done under the AIM one, we were required, you might remember that that delayed closing for us on the mill site. They allowed us to, um, get that financial assurance under the AIM permit and then we'll just transfer it over to ours. But the biggest item that we really need to look at here is the operations plan. And so that's why we're coming before you both for the permit, but then also for the declaration of restrictions that we need to be prepared to negotiate as a part of, um, our, our due diligence phase. So this is the list of self-imposed materials that we have agreed to, um, and this was a list that we had predetermined prior to, uh, Niron Magnetics. When you go through the entirety of what's allowed at a demolition landfill, it's a lot of, um, you know, s- construction and demolition debris type items, many of which have lead or asbestos or, or PFOS potential contaminants. So we really looked through that list and tried to narrow it down to items that both could benefit the city in some way. So think of things like pond dredging, instead of us having to haul elsewhere, we could bring here. Um, contaminated soils, we've, you know, for, on projects you might have contaminated soils that you have to haul to other landfills. Now we would have one in town, but then also tried to look at items on that list that we felt confident being able to accept without there being a ton of contaminants in them. That's how, that's where this list was generated, and then this is the list that was also used for the declaration of restrictions.
Is that what R.L. Larson's bringing in today is?
Uh, that's millions, right?
Um, no, R.L. Larson's bringing in millions and, and dirt, so I would say we're dirt poor at the landfill site. Meaning you have to have dirt to cover and uncover the waste. And so, um, we've been trying to stockpile some, uh, millions and, and dirt so that we can properly cover and manage the landfill appropriately.
So one of the, when April talks about covering and uncovering, one of the requirements if you operate the landfill is that daily you, you take an excavator and you, you cover and uncover with dirt or millions or you have to cover up the materials that are going in there and then you open it back up the next day. And then you cover it and you open it back up, and that's a requirement of these landfills. So, let's work through some options here. Um, we have explored multiple options, you've seen that in my Friday updates of, um, over the course of the last six months, meeting with multiple different vendors, trying to really understand what are, what are the holistic options. And you'll see the financial analysis of these options as we get to the end. But option number one would be for the city to operate. So we ran an analysis of what do we need to accept in cubic yards to fill this landfill and close it in thirty years? And using only those restricted wastes, so you would only allow what's on that list. You would need to allow at least fourteen thousand six hundred, on average, you know, there might be some years where you don't get any, but then there might be some years where you get a, a massive truckload because of a project, or truckloads because of a project. Um, it'll allow you to close it in thirty years. One of the biggest issues with it is that, of course, the materials that we're willing to accept are, are materials that every landfill loves accepting because they're not highly contaminated, so you're not able to charge a high rate for them. You, what you can charge the highest rate for are the materials that are highly contaminated materials. And so it's limited revenues, we're not confident that we would be able to generate enough revenue to build up funds for closure. We'd certainly work towards that, but we should anticipate taking out some level of debt for the closure costs, which we believe in today's numbers is approximately three million. Then you also have the, um, anytime you close, you have ongoing reporting, we have five landfills in town. You have ongoing reporting of all of them, minimum of thirty years, and in almost every situation, they've, they extend it. They find something that tests out in the wells or in the leachate system that requires you to extend it. You know, one of the things to consider is that right now this landfill, we feel confident that it is only filled with ash. Um, which has been a, wow, is that coming here? How nice of them. Now I have to find my spot again. It's only filled with paper ash, which we think is a direct result of why our leachate system hasn't, uh, had contaminants. So there is that overall impact, if you open this up and operate it at fourteen thousand cubic yards with any of these materials, it does increase your liable, or could increase your liabilities in the future for testing and, and environmental impact. It does require constant staff monitoring, you heard me talk about the covering and uncovering. Any materials that come in there have to be checked when they come in, um, and staff has to report on every single thing that comes in there. You don't necessarily need a weight station, but you have to have somebody who has a landfill operator license and they have to document the materials coming in, um, and then the yardage associated with them. There would certainly be materials and equipment necessary for startup as well as employees. Some indirect, or you could call them direct impacts. Truck traffic, just to give you an idea, based on fourteen thousand six hundred cubic yards is approximately fifteen hundred trucks per year. So you can do the math on what that might be per week, per month. The other factor to consider is that they have to use heritage, heritage drive because of weight restrictions. And so you are going to send these trucks up heritage and then, uh, around West Bridgeport and down Fourth Avenue to the landfill. So you're, you will take them through a heavy residential area.
Is that a weight restriction on, on Second Street South or the bridge?
Uh, I believe it was on Second Street South, do you remember? That was a, um, Jody's comment to us. You probably can look that up while we're talking here. Other things to consider, you know, site, obviously, odors. One thing that we, we learned a lot about but hadn't really anticipated is the dust and road watering and then street sweeping and cleaning. Like a lot of these trucks that are coming in are, are, um, not clean and they're tracking dirt through your roads. And so it requires street sweeping, but then also the road that they're traveling on to go dump the materials up on top of the landfill is gravel. And, um, when you get in the middle of summer and you have a dry spell, it requires a watering truck pretty consistently or you will have dust issues, uh, with residential properties around there. So just something to, to think about. We also tried to measure, uh, and take a look at, you know, what kind of impact will this have on the road? So overlays and reconstructs that would certainly advance our CIP plan for overlays and reconstructs cause you're placing fifteen hundred trucks per year approximately. Now, keep in mind that it might be that one year we don't have anything more than one and then the next year we might have a call from a hauler that has a massive, um, amount and you might get a bunch all at once. So hard to anticipate exactly when that bit would be, we're just talking about it generally. So wrap your head around this one, this is option one.
But option one, you don't have a estimate of the revenue that we would comment, just says limited revenue?
Our goal, I'll, Rob, I'll let you answer that one.
Yeah, no, we do have a estimate on revenue. Uh, SEH had helped us build a performa for landfill option number one, and it was building enough revenue to contribute to the trust for us to close it in, was it twenty or thirty years?
Thirty years, yeah.
So we're covering operations, we're covering capital, and then we're building even a little bit more to save, uh, in a trust fund to then close, the landfill, and whether that's all of it, uh, with the trust fund or part of it, trust fund, part of it using debt, uh, we're at least building some, um, to help with closure.
We think and feel fairly confident that you could build some level, but I think it's probably aggressive to assume that you would build enough to cover one hundred percent of the closure costs. By the time thirty years comes around, it's not gonna be three million dollars to close that, it's gonna be double if not more. And so that three million dollar estimate is kind of taken into account that we would hope that we would generate some revenues to be able to cover some of the closure costs. You will see that in the financial analysis towards the end of where we account for some of that. Okay, landfill o- option two, so some landfills in the state, um, Crow Wing County is one of them, have an outside operator that they hired to come in and operate it, and they have an agreement to operate. Um, and you, you know, put some policies in place, you include that as a part of your operations plan with your permit. Um, the biggest issue with this one, with any outside operator that we met with was that in order for it to be worth their time and energy and equipment and staffing, they would wanna run it at full capacity to have their return on their investment, um, approximately seventy-five thousand cubic yards annually, but it would be full within three years, so it's a short-term pain. Um, you could maybe get it filled up though and generate enough revenue to cover the, the cost of closure again. You would still limit the types of materials, um, more consistent acceptance of that waste daily, so envision those trucks more frequently in there. Again, you still have the, the potential liability of more than one material, but it wouldn't require equipment or staffing expenses from the city, that would all be the outside operator of somebody that's more of a subject matter expert that does this already. The Crow Wing County landfill is a, is a family-run business actually, I mean, so that's the uniqueness of this. It doesn't have to necessarily be a Vonco, it can be a individual or a family-run thing, but, um, they do, in order to make it worth it for them, they do need to have the ability to run it as a full-scale. Truck traffic drastically changes from fifteen hundred to fifteen thousand per year to meet that seventy-five thousand cubic yards. Um, again, site odors, dust, road watering, probably significantly more than, than what you're seeing on, on option one. And it would most certainly require a complete road reconstruct within three to five years. Now, one thing to consider and keep in mind is that you will likely have heavy construction there already on the site next door, at least for eighteen months of that time period. Landfill option number three is, is a little bit of a blend of option one while also trying to figure out how do we best use this property and still stay within the confines of the declaration of restrictions? Um, but also generating revenue to at least cover our operational costs. So it's a blend of the city operating while also trying to generate revenue. It would still limit the material acceptances, that it'd still be that same list. It's again, lowest revenue generating materials, however, we would generate other revenues by operating a commercial. Uh, we, we have commercial here, but I think that's still a little bit up for question of whether it could also be residential. It certainly could be, it's just, um, do we want it to be on top of the, the residential site we have already? Um, you could run that on the top of the landfill. Uh, we, we believe that, uh, we could accept some commercial yard waste by the yard, which is an allowable use underneath our permit that classifies the permit as active, which is ultimately what we're trying to achieve. Large stumps are, is one of those items. Um, and that it could be a backup site for a residential compost site, which is intriguing as we know Town Line Road will be under construction in twenty twenty-six. And really our intent here is can we generate enough revenues to cover our staffing, our equipment, and the MPCA permit fees? We know what we generate at the current compost site, and so just replicated those numbers here, assuming that we could at least generate the same. Um, again, likely wouldn't fill the landfill, uh, you'd still have to plan for debt, but it would allow us an opportunity to be more intentional about planning for that debt, um, instead of it becoming something soon. As with option one, you could plan for it in thirty years to close this, uh, and run it as a functioning business. You would still have more than one material in there. We would need one full-time employee for, and what we would do is combine both compost sites. The residential one right now, you know, May to October is essentially at least halftime of somebody's time. You would combine the two, make it one FTE, and then in the, um, non landfill operation season or non compost season, they could be a streets worker, which is what happens right now. We would need some materials and equipment for startup, um, but it leaves that landfill open as an option for us for things like natural disaster, contaminated soils, city projects, pond dredging. But one thing we would need to be really, really intentional about is that we are doing fund transfers when those things are happening so that we're paying ourselves essentially. If you do a street project or pond dredging, transfer the funds into this trust fund so that you're building up that closure fund. Other imp, you know, impacts of this one, there are some odors associated with our compost site that we noticed, especially when it's really hot out and they're turning the piles. There's limited truck traffic, it's not necessarily going to be the same type of truck traffic as option one or two. Could be some commercial vehicles, but if we allow for residential, it's, you know, trucks with trailers or, or primarily trucks. Anticipated road overlays in twenty thirty-eight and reconstruct in twenty fifty-three, which is what we have in our current schedule. So this is kind of a option one plus, you know, this is a blend of that option one. Option four is close it today, just close it in today's dollars. They already have two-point-one acres of it closed, we can combine all the materials similar to that two-point-one acres, you close it. And you could use it for something, um, like, well, you, Northside Park is a closed landfill, you could use it for a park. And the other option that is becoming more popular is for the use of, um, solar, that would be kind of the only option really to generate any source of revenue would be solar. You'd have ongoing reporting for the minimum of thirty years, but likely just plan for that to be longer. The nice thing about this is that you know there's only one product in there and you know it's today, to date, I feel like I should knock on wood, but it's not been impacting our leachate system. And so you, from an environmental and liability standpoint, you're able to move on from that, but you lose the landfill as an option for any of our own products, natural disaster, anything that might come up over the thirty years, that option's gone, you close it and it's never to be used as a landfill again. Nice thing, no truck traffic, no orders, no smells, no sites. It would require regular overlays as planned, but no reconstruct until twenty forty. So it, least liability, but it also takes the option away for us to use it for our own uses. The other option that we were excited about for a very short period of time, um, cause we quickly found out how expensive it was. And I remember, I think Ryan, we had talked about this at one point during, when we were, when we were looking at purchasing the property of just, how do we exhume the landfill materials? And when you exhume it, you restore the site back to its original condition and you can sell it. It becomes tax-based, you can redevelop it, you don't have the thirty years of reporting. Um, but you have to get everything out of there and a certain number of feet below, and then they come in and test and they make sure they get everything out. Um, and so the, the quote that we received for this was thirteen million dollars. So it is substantially more expensive. Now, we'll show you in the financial analysis that you can turn around and make a tax base, which does have a, a, a benefit to it, um, but it's just a really high initial cost. And then you also have to keep in mind that you're gonna have the truck traffic to exhume, which will be short-term. I, I think we had quotes of like six to nine months that it would take to exhume that all. Once they get it out, you'd flatten it and be able to sell. One al, one thing to consider with this too is that this landfill has historically been used and today is used as a really nice natural buffer between the residential neighborhoods and the industrial commercial area, um, that'll, that's more towards our public works facility and where Niron Magnetics would be. So that would be leveled, you would no longer have that large mound. Um, now, something would presumably be redeveloped there, but, um, it would, it would not be green space or, or that natural-looking buffer. It would most certainly require an immediate reconstruct of Fourth Avenue South as well.
And what would cause the immediate reconstruct?
The massive amount of trucks to get the materials out of there. I don't recall how many trucks that they had said as a part of their quote to get, um, it was like, it, it wasn't as, as high as option number two, um, but it certainly, you have to get the, the cubic yards that are currently in there, you have to get the full leachate system, you have to get a certain number of feet below, um, so it's, it's...
And then the trucks to fill the, bring dirt in to fill the hole back up. Um, so it, I mean, they were talking forty to sixty trucks a day in either operating at full scale or to exhume it. It's just operating at full scale would be longer than it would take to exhume it.
So then we laid it all out on a financial analysis where Rob, um, there, you know, the spreadsheet calculations behind this include things like on exhuming it, you would get eventual property tax base. You, on the, the orange one, which is option number two of an outside operator, you see a big peak there because they're gonna take a ton of materials, they're gonna make a ton of revenue, and then you eventually have to close it. And so all of those things are, are factored in here. Um, you can see that really option one and option three are fairly similar. And again, I, option three is kind of a one-plus option, it's a, it's a pretty similar option. You just, um, are not necessarily guaranteeing that you're going to achieve that number of cubic yards, but you could, cause it'd be available and it'd be an option. Any questions before I go to the next slide on this financial analysis that you would like Rob to answer?
So when you get to the point of being able to close it and you need to pay it three million, do you have as long as you want after to do that? Meaning, yeah, the first option where we do it over thirty years versus doing it in three years. If we do it three years out, we don't have three million anyways, then what's the point of doing that? So if we did, let's say we did option three and we did it three years and we're done, we have no money, can we just wait? Can we just wait and build up that funds until or does it have to be an operator?
They have to see you working towards closure.
You either have, correct me if I'm wrong, you either have to continue to operate it or you have to close it. You can't just set it idle.
So is moving funds over to that account be working towards closure?
There is no, so you know, I think the fun side is a piece of it. Another piece of it is that there's no statute language that says what qualifies as active. So there are some landfills. It's not preferred, but it's heavily discouraged by the NPCA. They want you to either active be active or or closed to Ryan's point, but there are some landfills that just accept one truck a year. And they qualify as active and they just run that thing in, you know, as long as they possibly can and one truck a year, check the box, because it is cheaper to run it as an active landfill than to close it if you don't have the money, because you're taking out debt and and interest. Our intent would be that we could plan for that, either plan for that debt or plan for building enough revenue. The other thing to consider is that the longer you the longer you postpone that closure could be some opportunities for grant programs or, you know, bonding or or legislative support. The closed landfill program they've said is likely not an option, but you never know that that could potentially become an option, especially with all of these unlined landfills that they're gonna be closing down. So it does buy you some time there of getting more years under your belt and seeing if there's another opportunity, whether it's debt, grant, cash, you know, things of that nature.
Rob, what are your revenue inputs for option three? I see there's a spike there about twenty forty-three.
Yeah, it's a gradual incline from twenty twenty-four to twenty forty-three. So earning that steady revenue on average over that time period. So when it spikes, that's when we begin closure and you can see the line turning back down.
But the revenue is mostly compost revenue?
Yep, what we had assumed from the compost, replicating composts, Anna had mentioned, and then also accepting other material in the more project based applications.
In a really simple, like in a much smaller scale.
And so you're projecting there will just be an increase in number of permits or cost of permits from that twenty twenty-five to twenty forty-three?
Correct. Yeah, we'll continue to have revenue exceeding costs over that time, which is why the line increases. And then closure, of course, when it starts to turn the other way. So I am assuming that we are profiting.
And why would it turn the other way? Like, why does twenty, what's twenty forty-four represent as a downturn for us?
Twenty years, then we close it.
But you could do, you could go thirty.
You could go thirty, yeah.
At some point, that will just tip off, but maximum of thirty. One thing to keep in mind that we're still wrapping our head around, but the commercial compost side versus residential would be a little different. Right now, we charge a residential permit that they can use a gate and they scan. We would still be required to have a landfill operator onsite checking the materials coming in and you do it by yardage. And so part of what we're assuming here is that that amount would increase, plus our our fees would increase over time. And and so you're seeing that growth there as well. But you do still have to have somebody onsite that's checking it by yardage and tracking that.
Do we know where the closest place another commercial compost site is?
I think Tri-County Organics, which is
And I would tell you a lot of open fields.
Yes, burn piles.
I mean, right, it's like fall collection, right? All these landscape companies are out doing leaves right now and they know a farmer or they know someone. And it's also not bad to till the some of those leaves back into the soil for soil conditioning for farmers, but.
And one thing we talked about from a public safety perspective is that, you know, we would I don't wanna put words in your mouth, but actually prefer the residential side just because we have a little bit more control over who's coming in and out of our community and you can control that permitting network. You the commercial side, you know, you start allowing any tree trimmer and you're not gonna just get landscaping companies that are commercial landscapers. You you're gonna expand that into a commercial network that might bring people in and out of your community. That that could be more concerning. They're not gonna necessarily be residents for sure.
Yeah, we're not this. Yeah, that's I think that's fair. I mean, not trying to place a bad name on the tree trimming business in particular, but unlicensed contractors tend to hire unsavory people at times, and I think there's some concern there of who's coming in and maybe tied to this a little, I can talk about the emergency management aspect of it that from simply that perspective, as you make this decision as an emergency manager, I'd prefer to keep it open and keep it available for I mean, the one storm we had this summer, you guys saw how much storm debris we had, and that was actually a pretty small storm. So if we end up from an emergency management standpoint, trying to do debris management afterwards is really, really difficult. And offering this to our citizens, if we reach a state or federal declaration, we can actually recoup money back from the government as well for allowing this material to go in there. That could develop into a relationship with the county as well as they look for places to manage debris, both from fires, but even even just storm debris damage when they're looking for places to put it, so.
One thing to keep in mind and consider to to Brandon's point, we had the small storm this summer, which had a high amount of debris, but in in general EM world, it was a small storm and we are busting at the seams at our current site, just because the debris was so high and we can't get rid of the mulch and materials fast enough. And so knowing that we would have an opportunity, whether it's residential or commercial, but another opportunity for compost, it would, it could be ideal for us.
Do we still have the relationship with the farming group that was taking compost material?
Yeah, and he was out there using the material all summer, correct? And mixing it in at, yeah, you guys likely saw that award that that he won for that. So, yeah, that relationship probably could grow over time if we had more materials. We have plenty of material, but we we could keep him very busy. But there may be other farmers like that relationships to build like that that could use the materials. We have a good relationship currently with another city who comes in and purchases it to bring to their soil making. They run it as a municipal operation of creekside soils in Hutchinson, and so we would look for additional relationships like that too of how do we sell this material and just really run this as a business operation? There's likely other ones like that out there. So keeping that in mind and in consideration, when you see that revenue, that's part of it too, is that we're we're predicting that we would generate profits and at some point clue close with a requirement from the Declaration of Restrictions of no longer than thirty years. So on there, it's it's twenty, Rob? I can't see that that far away. But you could certainly extend that to thirty.
But sorry, you just said that those are included. The revenue side is that are we including like the farmer taking stuff or creating a soil operation or is the revenue only permitted, residential permits?
Yeah, since we replicated what we're doing at the compost now, it was a permit model. Because currently, we have creekside come every couple of years when we have enough material, but it's not enough material to rely on on an annual basis.
It's not a consistent stream.
But that's included in here of of that, but it is. This is assuming revenue is similar to what we have today, which is a permit system fee. You would go by yardage if you did commercial. Otherwise, you do another permit system fee. We do have high demand from neighboring township areas that don't qualify for a compost right now that I'm certain would be very interested if we wanted to explore the residential side.
Quick question. Out of the box thought. I know that we have two issues, the landfill, and then we have another one that's outstanding, and that's the hills of Sartell or is there any way we could strike a deal with potentially taking some of those mounds down or landfill down as a produced cost or I I don't know how we would structure it, but is that is there, I mean, I don't even know what the capacity might be, something like that.
Are you suggesting that the piles would go into the landfill?
Correct, yeah, or use that material.
Yeah, it depends what the piles are. A lot of the stockpiles within the community is valuable material that can be resold and used elsewhere. If there are piles of stumps and trees and stuff, I think there's a couple of those. Those could go in the landfill. But I'm not sure I'm not sure you'd get people to put the dirt into the landfill when the dirt is usable for other reasons. And I don't think the NPCA would want you to either.
But if it was materials that, like I think of, I can think of a couple that are materials that aren't usable and there certainly could be an arrangement to allow those, if they're willing to haul it, to allow a discounted rate into into the landfill. Not sure they'd be willing to agree to that, but.
Yeah, I think most of it's usable, so I'm not sure they would be willing to pay us to put it in a landfill when they can sell it to get used someplace. So
Good thought, though.
They also probably have other locations that they can move their files to.
Okay, just a thought.
So the the least number of barriers to to entrance would be option three is what I'm hearing.
We feel confident because we know how to run a compost that we think we could have that up and running with the least barriers while still leaving the landfill open as an option for EM, pond dredging, our own product for like road contamination. Mill District is a site that we definitely have on our mind that we likely are going to need that landfill for. And you never know when you might get a call and we you review every single call that comes to you. I know the county's EM has reached out for for fire ash. Now, you have to test that and make sure it's not you know, filled with lead and asbestos and you don't wanna accept ash that's gonna create leachate system contaminants down the road, but you just never know when you might get a call that it could be a material that generates a revenue for us. And he, as luring as it is to just close it and be done with it and use today's dollars for closure, you are giving up that potential, both for our own internal operations and then also the the EM side or any other potential opportunity that might come. So, yes, to answer your question, least barriers to entry and we think the most opportunity to at least cover our costs, hopefully profit, build up a fund. I don't feel very confident saying that we would build up a fund that would cover closure at a hundred percent. But our goal would be to build up a fund as much as possible and then plan on our CIP for that closure in twenty thirty, you know, thirty years from now. And at least we can call it out. Right now, we're not planning for it at all. And so you're, to your point, Alex, you're you don't have the money either way. You know, we we would wanna get that on a cadence and on a plan and just call it out so that we can have it on our radar at some point. So it buys us some time for that too. And then you never know what grant programs, closed landfill program, what what types of things might come up in the meantime. One last slide. Just to show when do we believe it would lead to overlays versus reconstruct? We kind of addressed this earlier, but you don't see option two on there because it's the same material impact as option five, so it's actually layered behind it, but just to give you an idea of you know, how can we lessen the impact on our roads and just call that out in our CIP? So our recommendation is that we go with option three, operated as a compost yard waste site. To be determined of commercial versus residential. We can begin before the final permit is issued. It doesn't require a a permit issuance. We just have to follow our management plan that we're looking to see approval by the end of this month on. We would need to determine rates by yard if it's commercial or or a permitting system. Minimal improvements are needed for the site. One of the things that we believe the NPCA would require is a thicker temporary cover that would be more of a frankly, more of kind of a permanent cover. And we think that we can use some of those millions that are out there right now and really pack them down and put the rows on top of that. And so that could be an opportunity for us to use some of those materials. And so that's in the back of our mind. We know it would require one FTE, but that is built in the models that you saw. And we could also use that person on our other site. We have current equipment. Long term, continue to operate it and keep it as an active landfill, use it for larger compost weight wastes as we mentioned above, but then also have the option for us for those permissible materials on that list. We can use it for our own materials and ensure fund transfers. At least cover the costs of the permit to the NPCA equipment and employee within the compost revenues. And then try to work to build additional funds for closure from any sporadic acceptance of materials, and it just leaves that option for us for up to thirty years. Ensure we're including that debt on our CIP, really plan for it. So we think this makes the most sense for us from an operations plan. We would need to submit that as a part of our permit with the NPCA, and so our intent would be that once we get the okay to go forward with the permit applications, that we would submit with this as our goal in mind. Questions? I know that's a lot.
I guess have we so I would be a strong supporter of option three. But from an operational plan, I I guess wondering why we wouldn't look at this as an enterprise fund opportunity?
It is.
It will be.
It will be.
Yeah, so what I'd done a couple of months ago is create a waste management fund, which combines both the compost, which was currently being funded out of our general fund and the landfill, so that revenues from both could potentially contribute to our trust in a potential closure in twenty to thirty years. So being the goal to recover costs through fees, it constitutes as an enterprise fund.
Yeah, and I I think about that as an enterprise fund where we need, it needs to be self-sustaining. We need to find revenue sources. I mean, we have it somewhat self-impose imposed in that model of twenty to thirty year closure, but if we truly treated it like an enterprise fund, rather than sell our stuff to Hutch, we could start creating an opportunity to sell soil. And if we're doing that, we're putting waste in and we're taking it out, which extends the life far beyond beyond thirty years to a point where we may never close it. You talked about putting a temporary top on, I mean, you know, at some point, you could quite literally with the opportunity in front of us, we could clear out all the compost that's on top of that and we're back to where we sit today. If the right opportunity or landfill opportunity comes about. And then the other thought I have is why wouldn't we just close the other compost site so we're not operating two compost sites? From overall cost of of labor and or equipment, I mean, it's not a short jump between the two. That's a very nice central location. It's close to the department that's gonna manage it. But I think there's a ton of opportunity to improve operations by putting it there, doing a lot of what you talked about, but really looking to how do we generate revenue out of it, which also, you know, takes product that's brought in out while generating revenue?
Yeah, we could definitely explore that option with our public works team. I'd wanna get their input. And we have some infrastructure out there. I think it could be moved. I'm just thinking that gate that we invested in in the fiber and but the one nice thing about that location versus this one is that this one is going to have to be run by a manual landfill operator. We could not do the gate. You couldn't, but you're gonna have to either way. We were thinking it would be more of an on-call, but if you use it as your primary, they'd be out there anyways.
Well, and I hear the concerns about the commercial side of it and and what you've talked about, but I mean, I look at what it takes for your intake today for a licensed contractor to get a permit in Sartell. Like, we could treat that very similar, so they have to be bonded, they have to be licensed. To get a permit there, you could allow commercially Monday through Friday when it's staffed. You could, if we move the gate, you could allow weekends to still be residential. It's a QR code. If your QR code doesn't scan, it doesn't open. I mean, I just think there's a ton of opportunity there. I'm not saying sell that compost site. But I do think there'd be, I mean, with the road going, and I was just with Persky on Monday or Tuesday. And with Town Line getting redone, like that should spur things to develop different than a compost site out there.
Well, in that that year, that that summer, when we have that road project, will probably be a really great opportunity for us to test the waters and push everybody to this site, just because the construction out there is gonna be a nightmare for that compost site. And so we could try it that summer, see what it, I definitely would wanna chat it through with Public Works and I see April's ready to punch holes. You say punch holes and everything. Um, two things. I mean, you made the comment of not getting rid of that property over by Town Line, um, which I think is a good idea because you cannot do landfill operations on a final closure, so if you do close it at some point, you would not be able to use it as a compost site anymore, so that would terminate that. Um, the other thing is, the NPCA would not let you use the gate. It would be considered an active landfill and you have to have somebody there if somebody's on that property. Um, so that's the only caveat to then being able to use it on the weekends is you still would have to have a personnel there and somebody who is a certified landfill operator.
In your application process, do you have to specify whether you're taking residential or commercial or both or no?
Um, no, if option three is the route, um, that we decide to go with, we just need to identify that we would want to use it as a compost site, um, and we would structure it that we would a- as another way to generate revenue to help build the funds to eventually close it. That's how the NPCA would look at it, so, um, we don't see an issue with that, but it, we can't just do it without their approval, um.
But to answer your question, we would keep that operations plan just like the permit as general as possible. And general and vague and broad as possible to give us as much opportunities, I think. Um, on the permit, we went as big as just operating as a full scale, just because we can always self impose our own restrictions and the same on the operations plan is that we're gonna keep, our intent would be that we would present this as broad as possible, um, so that we don't narrow ourselves at any, I wouldn't want to put on there that this is only commercial and then we want to be residential, so we will just say compost waste, um.
Yeah, uh, option three really leaves you the most flexibility and you may find that you start operating it as that combo compost and landfill and you get some haulers that are coming on a regular basis and it may be more economical to use it more as a landfill versus a compost or vice versa, but um, until you really get those operations going, you won't know which, you can be flexible in how much you use it as for either.
And what demand comes forward to.
Mm-hmm. Um, one thing to to think about as we talk about the closure period is is one of the biggest things that's driving that is going to be that declaration of restrictions and so just something to keep in mind if if there's a tolerance level, um, from Niron that we could go beyond the thirty years because we're using it for a compost site, there could be something to gain there, too. Like, there's nothing that i- it's not the NPCA that's saying you have to close in thirty years. That's us being told we have to from the declaration of restrictions, so they want to see you actively working towards closure. Um, and so if there's a willingness to extend that time period, um, that could be really beneficial because to April's point, as soon as you close it, you can no longer use it for a compost site. It's a park, solar, that's about it. So do we all feel comfortable with option three? With our operations plan laying out option three? Um, and then I will work to, um, I'll make sure when we start the declaration of restrictions that we have an understanding there as well. Um, but it is a, you know, it's a sustainable green item that I I think they'd be happy with. Okay. That is the PowerPoint. What time is it, Rob?
Seven.
Seven? Um, Stacy was gonna join with a teams meeting, but, um, why don't we take a recess and grab dinner? I, dinner came in while we were talking, right? And then we can get her set up.
Did she jump on?
I'm just joining now.
Hey, thank you. Title that I never thought I'd have is resident landfill.
Hey, Stacy, can you hear us?
Oh, hello. Oh, my goodness, I'm very big up there. Oy.
Um, let me try to turn you down one second.
You're very big and you're also very loud.
That loud, huh?
Yes. Do you want, I'm gonna grab you food.
Okay, yep. Do you want to test your audio now?
I am testing my audio now to see if my volume is a little bit better under control. What do you think?
That's perfect. Yep, I was able to figure it out.
Excellent, excellent. Hey, Alex, what's on the menu tonight?
Soup and sal- my mic's not on.
Soup and salad.
Soup and salad. Hey, Ryan, hello, hello.
Howdy. We might need you to come back in, uh, the spring on that one tap thing. I could see where their desire is. Yeah. To me, it's just we're decimating that park. Like.
There is no reason outside that.
Yeah. Yep.
Rob, how are we gonna do?
What do you want to do?
The easy way to tell.
Yep, we can do that.
Can we have her and the shared screen and?
Yep.
Because it'd be nice to go through.
What do you want to share?
Um, go to the Oh, shoot. Um, Miranda, can you grab waters? I think we've got some in the back. Go to the special meeting. And go to combined monitoring reports. Stacy, I'm gonna pull up the combined monitoring reports and we can start there. Does that make sense?
When you say combined monitoring reports, I need to understand what you mean.
Um, all of them, two point one to two point nine and the, and to just have a general discussion about the interpretations.
Oh, that's just fine.
Is that good? Okay, so we'll share, we'll share that so you have it on your screen and then they have it on their screen and then they can also see you. Is that accurate, Rob? He's working on it.
Yeah. So this is.
Can you see that, Stacy?
I can see it just fine, yeah.
Awesome, beautiful. Rob, you're so good at that.
And I've got the manual open, too, on my own desktop, so. Or not the manual, the, uh, packet.
Oh. Great.
Hi, Jill.
Hi.
We are back out of recess. Uh, next up is initial assessment of all monitoring policies for reasonableness of interpretations.
Um, council, we have Stacy with us on Teams, so I think on your dais you can see her and can you see what's up? Okay, so, um, Stacy's joining us remotely and then what's on the screen is all monitoring reports, two point one through two point nine, so all monitoring reports around um, the executive limitations. And you might recall that we had talked at the last workshop that, you know, some of these reports you might not get for seven, eight months or a year. So, so if there's an item of material impact that you're you're really concerned about the interpretation on and we want to make revisions to any provisions, we should do that sooner rather than later. Um, so Stacy, I'll turn it over to you. They can all hear you fine, um, and then we'll let you lead. Does that sound okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
So I want to make sure we're all u- understanding, um, what Anna just said. And Anna, you were talking about time to adjust the provisions. I want to be clear that you're talking about whether the board or the council needs to or decides they want to change some of their policy language or exa- like unpack what you just said a little bit more. I think it's important that we're all on the same page.
Correct. If there's a, um, interpretation that would drive different policy.
Okay, yep. Which is, council, how you'd, how you would normally respond, right? I mean, after you've assessed something for reasonableness, unless it's incomplete or by that I mean might not address all of the aspects of the policy language itself or, uh, perhaps there's not enough information in the interpretation for you to be able to deem reasonableness. Say if it's just kind of a dictionary definition that doesn't give you more on the ground understanding. Or if the measurement indicators, that's because that's part of your assessment of reasonableness, really, in your collective opinion, don't get to the heart of what needs to be monitored or measured. Um, then you're gonna be looking at not a reasonable interpretation. If all of those are in good shape and you still don't like the direction that the organization is headed because of this, then you remember that your, um, first line of defense is to go back to your policy language to begin with. So I just want to make sure we're all clear on that. Okay? Does anybody have any questions on that?
Not seeing any, but one point of, um, clarification I want to, or, um, one thing I would share is last night when I learned that council member Meyer wouldn't be present with us. Um, I would say a little bummed out that we have council member Meyer, who has a ton of experience in this, isn't with us tonight for review, and then the two council members elect. Um, I was really hopeful that we were gonna have the seven of us, uh, I guess collectively is that we get current council and future council to all go through this, understand this, have dialogue on it. Um, and so a little bummed out as as where we sit tonight, um, but also, I guess, hopeful or or expect that as we turn the calendar with a new council, we have this in an abbreviated format so that the council at that time is also bought in and understanding. Um, as I see this as really how we will function as a council today and into the future, I want to make sure that, uh, I guess easy way to say is both sets of councils are are bought in and and we're all, we're all in the same direction.
Well, I think it might be a good idea for all of you to weigh in on that, to make sure that you're all in the same frame of mind about that because you just unpacked quite a lot there, Ryan. And I know we've had conversations as the sitting council in the past about timing and how we move forward, so would it be helpful for all of you to just take a moment and, um, share your thinking about this because this is a pivotal time right now? And, um, getting through this transition is pretty important. Getting through it successfully is pretty important. So do you want to take just a moment and have everybody share their thoughts about this?
Sure.
Sure.
But, uh, I'll start there, you're done.
Oh, sweet, I'll start. Um, I think Mayor's, Ryan's points are, um, um, his concerns are appropriate, um, at the same time. Sorry about that. It's hard. Um, at the same time, I think it's it's valuable for the new elected council members to be part of the conversation. Um, I have a hard time thinking that they'd be able to restructure this at all without the six months that we went through it. Um, obviously, it'd be, same thing with, um, council member Meyer, if he was here, it'd be beneficial. Um, myself, I've reviewed, um, as much of the eighty-nine pages as I can to be comfortable with it. Um, and overall, I have a few notes, but I'm, um, fairly confident with the dialogue that we've had over the last six months that, uh, we can move forward.
Uh-huh. All right, thank you. Who's next? I, all I see is tiny little pinpoint people here, so Ryan, you're great at keeping folks, uh, just managing the room. Can you help out?
Yeah, Jill's up next.
Um, yeah, I I appreciate the inclusivity, uh, Mayor, and, you know, it's exciting to have two new elect council members that, um, might have that opportunity or could have the opportunity to take it exposure to this this evening. But I I think this is a project that this council started and should see through. Um, I think the new council has every prerogative to go in whatever direction they choose, but I think we all came to a consensus that this is something we wanted to implement and we felt strongly about it, so I I feel strongly that we we continue, um, as planned and see this portion through to get get us to the end of the year. And again, this, the monitoring reports, um, are just one aspect of this and um, they will be reviewed in in future and so I think that there is plenty of opportunity for a future council to make changes if they see appropriate.
Tim?
Um, I would concur with those two other council members that spoke already. Um, I do think that, um, this is something that we created from a year ago now and have gone through multiple iterations of each one of these four phases of the governance policy. In reviewing these, we've given guidelines, we've given suggestions, we've edited, we've wordsmithed. Um, I think that the people that are sitting here and minus Jed, but I think he has a different level of knowledge of this program, but I think the people that are engaged in this currently have a, um, an intimate knowledge or under, relationship with this about having created it and I think that as we go through these, there might be some clarifications in in, you know, understanding, but I I think we're pretty close and I welcome, you know, having the two new council members, um, get oriented and come up to speed and look forward to actually hearing their, um, insight to this policy. Um, however it might be, i- it it does take some time getting, um, an understanding and our arms around it and when they do that, I think that they will bring insight that we might have overlooked or didn't quite capture. So when they do get their orientation and step up, um, I definitely look forward to, you know, helping craft the final version of this going into twenty twenty-five with their input.
And I just want to, um, maybe I didn't communicate that appropriately. My my ask last night to the, um, Policy Governance Committee, which is myself, council member Elness and Anna were, was actually to move this to December when I was hopeful that we would actually, the next workshop, which I was hopeful we'd have seven people. Um, I don't think it would be prudent for us to not do this tonight. I'm in support of that. Uh, all I would say is that we as a future council need to bring this back to a future workshop in in probably Q one. Uh, January is gonna be too early, but, um, I I, yeah, so.
Agreed.
Went through a hundred and twenty-eight pages. I don't want to put that on ice any more than anyone else does. Um, so very comfortable and and ready to go for tonight.
Um, Stacy, I'll just, I wanted to chime in and just make sure council's aware. I I think I included this in my Friday update. I bet I can't remember. Um, Stacy has orientation scheduled with both new council member elects for December thirteenth for two and a half hours. Uh, she'll be in person here. Um, and so I think that'll be a really, really great opportunity for them to at least start to get their arms wrapped around it because I think that is, you know, even if, even them sitting here today and and I'm confident they'll watch this recording, too, it's overwhelming if you don't have that base knowledge and understanding that you guys all already have. Um, it's still overwhelming even when you have that base knowledge and understanding. But that orientation will be really helpful. Um, I did connect with council member Meyer last week Thursday when he let me know that he wasn't going to be here and he passed on some feedback, so I have notes on that. Um, that'll make sure to speak up. If you guys don't mention it, I'll make sure to speak up on his behalf and then, um, I did communicate, Rusty was planning on being here, but I'm guessing he went to that call and, uh, council member elect Lynch said he wasn't going to be here, um, but I got him all the information for the recordings. So I think we're in good shape for proceeding tonight, um, but I, to Mayor Fitzsim's point, I think it's really, really critical. Obviously Jill and Alex, you guys will be gone, but for Jed, Ryan and Tim of, um, shepherding this forward. I mean, we've talked about that, that that it's, let's get this set up to a point. Let's get this set up to a point that this council has worked on and feels really good about. But then there also has to be a level of confidence to to bring it forward and shepherd it forward. And and I think Stacy will do an awesome job with the the new council member elects to help gain a level of confidence and comfort with them too.
Well, and your your policies are activated now, right? So you're living in this model. You're just taking the next step forward in the process, which is all to do with the monitoring, the third down product of the board. And so it's great that you're wanting to take the time tonight to take that closer look at these. So before we leave that, then, council members, do any of you feel like you are, after hearing each other out, not maybe on the same page? Because I I don't want to, you know, this is not the time for anything other than perfect clarity amongst yourselves.
Seeing three fingers or whatever.
Oh, yeah. What am I supposed to do?
We're good.
See how many fingers?
Love it, like it, live with it, leery loathe? Is that what you're talking about?
Something like that, yeah.
Something like that. So if we get at least one, two or three fingers up, you're golden.
Uh, we're golden.
Excellent. Okay, all right. Well, let's get cracking then. So the the charge tonight, looking at your agenda, number three, policy interpretations, is to do an assist initial assessment of all monitoring policies for reasonableness of interpretations. That's a stiff order, right? That only means executive limitations, as you all know. My question, man, probably the best focus or person to answer this would be Anna. If we chose a pecking order based on what's most urgent, like what's coming due the soonest. I'm assuming that financial condition and activities would be at the top of the list. That's two point three. And I know there's a a request to get two point eight going. Are there any others that would be kind of at the top of that list, just based on when their first reports are due?
I'm just opening that right now. So. Two point eight is due in December, and so we've got that second on the list here that we can focus on solely. But other than that, two point one is due in January. And then then you start to get into the financial ones. And so I know a couple of council members had called and asked, you know, where do I focus my attention here? Because it's it's hundreds of pages. My response to them was exactly what you just said, like real, I would focus on the financial aspects and then employment related. Because if there's, if there's interpretations or policies in there that give people pause on the employment side, that could be a material impact that would send staff down a different path than maybe what you intended. And so. And I think that one is, employment is two point two.
All right, so how about we do? Two point two, then two point three, financial condition and activities. Then see where we're where we are for time. And then go down to two point eight and then just take it from there based on how much time we have. Does that make sense to everybody?
Stacy, two point seven is the employment practices. That's what I had that wrong. Yeah, sorry.
Two does have employee items, but two point seven is more the hiring side.
Jed had some questions on two point seven.
All right, so let's pull up two point three. And then I'm going to remind all of you again, the most typical ways that assessment would 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 come up negative would be if the majority of you feel as if the not all aspects of the policy have been addressed. So look for complete lists, not down to every single word, but the major elements of the policy language. Have each of those major elements been addressed? If it gives you enough understanding of the reality on the ground. So if that's scant, that would be a flag to me. If, when you look at the measurement indicators, the majority of you say, man, that's just not going to give us an indication of what's most important with this particular policy. And so those are the usual things, the usual suspects for being not reasonable. So with that in the back of your minds and knowing that all of you have reviewed these. Let's start by saying, what did you flag in your reading of two point three? That makes you step back and go, mm, no, I I need I need more understanding of something. So let's just start and see where you're at. Let's just kick the tire.
Anyone have a two point three item? I think we're good on two point three.
Is that two point three at all, like all of the provisions underneath it? So two point three point one, et cetera, et cetera?
I guess clarification, our packet was one hundred and twenty eight pages. I'm seeing eighty nine here. What's the variance?
The packet included two point eight in entirety at the way end of it. So this is two point one through two point eight as a whole, but then I had to submit an actual draft, like final of two point eight. So that got added to the end.
So two point three was provided to us on that Friday in its entirety?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. And I'm not entirely surprised that two point three, honestly, a lot of the financial stuff, we're already in our financial policies. Like, we carried a lot of that over and interpretations on it is pretty. Pretty, yeah, it's pretty black and white on the financial side. Rob did a lot of those.
Prior when we had a finance committee, there was a lot of work that went into that over the last two to three years. That to Anna's point, I think we carried over. I mean, some of the numbers have changed as far as twenty thousand limit or ten thousand limit, that's gone up. I don't know that there's an example where, hey, that's a problem. I don't know that we've done that. And so I, that's probably one that'll just be monitored ongoing and. But I'm not, no one at the DICE here has any items on two point three.
So two point three at all, all of the provisions underneath that, you're all saying, when we look at the interpretations for all of those provisions, plus the measurement indicators, the compliance measurement indicators. Your assessment is, yes, that's a reasonable interpretation.
That's confirmed by three fingers.
That's excellent. And gut check, everyone, when you read those interpretations, did it help you understand the reality on the ground of your policies?
Took a little thinking to connect them back. But yes, I think. Yes, I think that it took some connecting the dots, but yes, it was there.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, that's that's a really good sign that things are working well. Oftentimes, when I work with groups and they're getting their first monitoring report and really looking at the interpretation. If if I hear, wow, I didn't know that that's how things were done, that that makes sense. I never knew we were doing. That's a good sign. It's giving you the kind of information that you may have never received before. So yay, I'm glad you're having this reaction, that it's giving you the information you need.
I just think two point three is a combination of there's been a lot of work done. There's alignment with staff and council that has happened over the past number of years. And there's also a lot of state statute that restricts what can be done. So I guess I'm, I'm wondering, you are very surprised we don't have anything, so I'm wondering what we're missing, but.
Nope, just very happy, Ryan, very happy. Very happy. You know, along with your, all of your work on developing those policies, I've been doing a lot of work with Anna and her staff to make sure that those interpretations had what we thought you all would want to see, like thoroughly done, so.
You should be really glad that you're seeing the third version and not the first one.
Yeah, 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 okay. All right, so here's a technical question that you'll all want to think about for a moment. Your task tonight was to assess reasonableness on all of the EL interpretations. Do you want to just track where you're standing? And then when it gets to the actual time that the full report would be received with data according to the schedule and all? And then go back through the interpretation and assessing for reasonable at that point and make official motion? To, so it's included in your minutes? Or how would you, how do you want to handle that piece of it?
Well, we're in workshops, so we can't actually make a motion and approve it. It needs to go to actual council meeting, so.
Right.
I feel like tonight, by structure, is more of education, feedback, guidance. And this will be the only time that we're going to have Jill and Alex for the feedback. And so I'd love if we could, I'd love if we could plow through all, all of them to get that feedback. Rather than hit some of the ones at, at the onset, we were talking about, hey, what's coming due first? But if we only do that, we're going to miss feedback from both of them and may never get.
Good point, Ryan, good point. Okay. So I'm trusting that Anna and or somebody on the staff is making a note of where you all landed for reasonableness on.
Yep, I got it.
Yep, two point three. So then let's keep going. Let's keep going. I think the next one on the list was two point seven, right, employment?
Or do you just want to go in order? To Ryan's point, if we're going to go through them all, should we just go in order and go to two point four?
We can do that. And then just, let's all be watching, watching the clock to make sure we get things done. And if we need to jump around later on.
Yep.
To make sure we've done what needs to be done to keep you on track, we can do that.
Yep. This is, two point four is another financial one, so I.
Okay.
This is one that we've done a lot of pre-work on prior to policy governance, so I'm. And it's more, it's black and white in a lot of statute as well.
Council, anything on two point four?
I do not.
Uh, only thing I have on two point four is two point four point eight. There's a section in there where if a department head is, or a department is not able to get down to, I'll try, let me find this here.
Two four eight, the tax?
Yeah.
Tax rate?
Yep. And it was, may, it was discussed or highlighted in here that.
If but if departments require a budget increase.
Budget increase that the department head would need to come to the council. I guess I would like to see that's removed. I mean, our employee is the administrator. And so in my opinion, that the administrator should be managing the department heads. And administrator should be coming to the council requesting something above that, not putting it onto the department head.
So just strike that whole if departments, that whole last sentence, is that?
Yeah, I mean, we're, I guess I I step back and say, the council's saying get to zero.
Yep.
You're working with your staff to get to zero. If there's a reason you can't get to zero, you've got to present that to the council, not.
Your department head, yeah.
Hey, you or you, you got to go, if you want that, you got to go fight for it at the council, like. We should be working through that with you.
Yeah, and that actually, I mean, we ca, that came up this go around and we talked about how we wouldn't want that going forward. So I I think that makes sense to me that that is a good area, that as long as we all agree that that it would not be, like, that's not what we're after, is allowing that. Stacy, is that? Yeah, I know, I don't know how to handle.
Yep, hang on. So what, what, what you're of, need to avoid, council members, is telling Anna what her interpretation should be. So it's not, this practice isn't about editing the draft. It's about stepping back after you've absorbed the information to say, is this a reasonable interpretation? In in the scheme of reasonableness, is this a reasonable one? And if, because of that sentence that starts if departments require, you're thinking as a majority, that's not reasonable. Then you might want to consider adjusting the language of this provision to force her in a specific direction. Because if this is reasonable, if if anybody could come and say, yeah, well, that is reasonable. Then if you're serious about giving your quarterback the ability to call her own plays, you don't, you don't get to go in in there and say, no, you can't do that without changing something about that playing field. So is that sentence, if departments require a budget increase, et cetera, et cetera? In the scheme of reasonableness, is that reasonable? That's your first question.
Sure. And council, I guess I would, I would suggest we change the the provision, provision to state that any, any proposed led, uh, budget above zero percent would be presented by the city administrator. So it makes it black and white.
So it's here from the rest of you. What are your thoughts? Is it reason, we heard from Ryan, what do the rest of you think? Is that interpretation reasonable? If it's not reasonable, you call her out on, that is so not reasonable, like, and here's X, Y, Z, why? If it is a reasonable, a part of a reasonable interpretation, and y'all or the majority of you don't like the direction that takes the organization, then then entertain the idea that Ryan had about the adjustment to the language. So what do the rest of you think?
Yeah, I would agree with Ryan that it doesn't create the kind of partnership that we're looking for between us and the directors or supervisors. And we report to Anna and vice versa. So I would agree.
I think that it fosters the communication between Anna and her staff to clarify what exactly the need is. And then she can hopefully convey it clearly to us what the department might require.
Yeah, I think that's fair.
Can I ask a point of clarification?
Absolutely. To me or to the council?
To the council, because I think the way Ryan worded it is that anything over zero percent would be presented by the administrator. Should it just be? Any, anything related to the tax rate is presented by the administrator, whether it's zero percent or over or whatever. Like, it should be communicated by the admin, doesn't matter what that number is, it should be presented by me. Is that?
Yep.
The spirit? Okay.
Do you have the ability to bring in? Somebody, is that an option for her to bring in that person to make the pitch? Or is that something that we want just to come right from her? If there is a presentation that needs.
Yeah, I mean, I I, I think the spirit of that is that Anna owns that, or the administration owns that, right? What what I really want to guard against is you know, someone pitching to Anna, like, hey, I need this and I'll go to council and I'll get it. And at different times, like, we've had, this council's had multiple conversations of here's when things should come. It shouldn't come off cycle. It shouldn't, you know, it shouldn't be, hey, do I, do I get this to protect the community or do we get this? Collectively, the staff need to work together to say, here's the overarching zero percent that that council's done. How do we get there? And not, hey, one off, let's go talk to council about it. That's the spirit and and we're, as we navigate this here. We talked about it for, within the six month training here, we've talked about, I feel like we've talked about this. And and I was surprised to see it in there. To Stacy's point, it's it's Anna's interpretation to own. My gut was, the easy part was, hey, she she was going to strike that and we all agreed to it. Understanding structurally, we have to actually change the whole overarching and then Anna needs to go rewrite it based on that. It's just how we get there. I'm learning we need to be. It's just how we get there, um, I'm learning we need to be more structured.
Maybe it's because the provision is so focused on the rate, but it really should begin with. We'll develop a preliminary and balanced budget that's like, something like developed among department heads.
Unified budget?
And then secondary to that is like, with the goal of. Greater than or equal to zero percent of the previous tax rate. Like, there's two components to it. One is you create a budget by working with your department heads, period, right? And then the goal of that is that it's presented to council with the, with it being the, the desired percentage rate. Does that make sense?
This is probably getting into my interpretation, but for us, a preliminary budget is a departmental budget. Like, it is, I can't bring a preliminary budget without including all the departments on it, so kind of. It, it's achieving that with the wording here. Um, I think it's adding a line of development from the budget that is, you know, greater less than zero percent of the previous fiscal year tax rate. Uh, as presented holistically by the city administrator.
Sure.
Excellent. Okay, are y'all council members, are you getting your heads wrapped around, oh, yeah, we're not about changing the interpretation wording? We're about thinking about reasonableness first or not reasonableness. And then having exactly the conversation you did, it was perfect. How can we adjust our language in our policy to guide the organization? Remember, governing is all about guiding, it's not telling Anna what plays to call in. So guiding it, how did that, how did that land with you? Are you starting to feel it, feel how this can work?
Feeling it.
Feeling it? Excellent, okay.
Any other two point four? We're good on two point four.
Excellent, alright, uh, then what, two point five? Or did you wanna back up and get two two?
I think let's just keep going in order and we can circle back to the top, it's fine.
Alright, two five, asset management. Did anybody point any, or wanna bring anything up?
Tim?
I'm looking for my notes, Pat, go ahead, somebody else.
Uh, two five, uh, section under two five point two, physical assets. We talk about at the top there, buildings, land, infrastructure, significant pieces of equipment. Um, under interpretation, we, let's see. Under section one. We talk about, in my notes I have, we talk about cars and equipment. Um, and I feel like it's not inclusive of the assets like facilities, infrastructure, landscaping, or turf. So I'm not suggesting how we change number one, but I'm saying that I don't believe number one aligns with the overarching. Of two five two.
Yeah, the completeness.
Yep.
Huh, Ryan, it sounds like there's an issue of completeness. And let's all check, are those issues that Ryan called out perhaps covered anywhere else? And I'm scanning down, Anna, is that, are those concerns about building maintenance, anything like that? As far as you recollect in any other policy or provision?
I didn't.
Not that I, no.
Then, then that's a great find, that's a great find.
So then what do we do? Like, I, I mean, I'm not, I'm not actually submitting this report, so I go, I get the opportunity to edit it before I submit it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that's where, I mean, think about it, everyone, this process isn't about gotchas, that's not it. It's about staying in your lane, but then fostering really good conversation. And you've already had some of that tonight, and so Ryan, well caught, that's, that's excellent.
Yeah, I just think that, I mean, we talked earlier tonight, uh, prior to you joining us, Stacy, just about. Our park system and green spaces and everything else and improper wear and tear. Like, I feel like that's gotta be key in, in this.
Yeah, yeah, excellent.
Um, so I had that one, and then section two.
That's the private use section?
Private use section, yep, I, I liked seeing a lot of that, I think it's inclusive of what we were uh looking for. But a call-out, and I'm not sure that where your, where thought was, and I'm, I'm curious about it, is just. There's been a longstanding agreement paid on-call firefighters, use of a wash bay at the fire station. And I see that as being taken away in here. And so I wanted to know, was that, is that an intentional move? Is that a, um, just fell into uh the category or?
I did not know that they still did that.
Oh.
So that is not intentional, but I, I see that in here is an exception, we have in here an exception to private vendor leasing it. Um, so I wonder if it's, an exception would also be then the fire depart, I'm assuming we still want to allow that.
There's a lot of history there, going back three administrators. Um, and so I just wanted to make sure that if it's intentional, that it's intentional and that it's not something that. Um, ju- what it sounds like is just kinda caught up in the overall chapter of it. And that someone is violating it unintentionally later on.
Any council, other council members have a differing opinion on that? I mean, for example, do you see risks with uh making that a, a, available to firefighters?
I, I defer to your guys' opinion.
Yeah.
Well, it had, this is twelve years ago, it had been taken away. And that there was a big revolt, and then it came back, and I would tell you that the use is probably super limited.
But just.
But it's one of those that, that's a, that's a benefit that you're now taking away.
Yep.
Um, I, I don't know, if, if you see it any different from that exposure, Tim?
I think people appreciate that as a, as a benefit to the position, so I, I definitely think. I think that it's a benefit to the position and part goes with the, the kind of responsibility, you have that ability. And it also um builds ownership of that um station and department with the employees and firefighters. I think it kinda feels like it's home or somewhere they can go. And I, I think we should encourage our firefighters to be, you know, close to or in that building whenever they see an opportunity.
Sounds like PD staff does the same, so I wanna make, it's good we're calling it out, so that either we are including it or we're not, and let's be clear about it, so.
So I have notes to um further expand both areas there then, um, with that additional context, so that's helpful.
So I wanna check in with Anna, how is this working for you, Anna? Are you starting to get your own rhythm of this kind of review of, of, of reasonableness of interpretations?
Yeah, it's great, I, it's super helpful, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yep.
I think we should add the ladder truck for installing Christmas lights in our houses.
And that's where we draw the line.
Well, we better get that approved this year.
Alright, Ryan, back to you, you wanna call to see if there's?
Uh, any other two fives? Alright, two six.
One's a short one.
Any two sixes? You just have two seven, right?
Yep.
Uh, two six, my only call-out is, um, we're already in this and we don't have a plan in place. Um, so to me, this screams extreme urgency of getting a plan in place. Uh, being we've already turned this on.
Um, Nikki will be bringing the communication policy in January with the treat. It had, it's a part of what will be required with the treatment of residents, and that's two point one, that'll come in January. So this will, it'll get accomplished as a part of that, but, um, yes, I can put urgency behind this.
I'm happy to hear everybody's um recognize the urgency of this. In fact, it just came up with a different group I was working with today, this exact same policy. And that group saying, this is important, so yay, yeah.
Well, and the second of that is it showed in our packet that we were in compliance, and.
I put them all as in compliance.
Yeah.
Just drag.
Yeah, I'm just free, yep.
Any other two sixes? Yes, there's the.
Two seven, then?
Uh, two seven, Alex has some two sevens.
Yeah, so two point seven point two, which is involving director level hiring. So we had established before about public safety, having all council involved, non-public safety. Um, at least a representative of council. Um, I don't have a specific part in here that I wanna change, just however, we historically operated. Go ahead.
Alex, try, try that again. You're never part that you wanna change, instead, that, like, what would, what are you citing that may not be reasonable?
Well, I wanna make sure we're operating under the policy that we will be going for, or the structure. So we've always had, or I've always had, we had the chief position in the public works director. The last few months, we've operated without either of those, and going forward, we might do either way. So, um, like I said, I don't have a sentence or bullet point, I say, hey, let's change this to make it compliant. Um, or.
Reasonable?
Accept a reasonable interpretation, however, I just wanna make sure we're mindful of establishing it the way that we feel like we wanna move forward. If that makes sense.
This was actually, that was the same one that Jed brought up, not around the reasonableness interpretation. The interpretation he felt was fine, but he just wanted to call out, we probably got a little too focused on the word directors. Like, what if, let's, let's say it's a fired, like, what if it's a chief position, but it isn't an actual direct? Like, what's a director level position? And the interpretation is fine of how we interpret it, but is that really the spirit of what you guys are trying to achieve? If you're hiring, maybe we should generalize that, was his suggestion of, instead of saying public safety directors, you say police chief or fire chief. It does not matter what their title is, the intent is that those are two of the most forward-facing. Um, positions, probably more so than even mine, and it needs to include public input and it needs to include council input. And it does not matter if they have the title director, it's that they are the.
The lead.
They are the chiefs, they are the public safety chiefs, I don't know how you wanna title that. So, his feedback wasn't around the interpretation, but more around rewording the provision, if I'm saying that right. Alex, does that encompass what you were saying too?
Yep.
And Jill, did I hear you as offer the word lead?
I, yeah, I just was echoing what she was saying as.
And I don't know how that is, I mean, technically, by state statute, you have to designate somebody as your police chief or fire chief, and so it's.
Chief law enforcement officer is what the state statute says, you have to have a chief law enforcement.
Yeah, and same on the fire side, you have to designate somebody as your, so I don't know how you word that, um, but it just feels like we. From his perspective, he was feeling like we maybe are not hitting the spirit of what your initial discussions were.
I think that the general resident or citizen within Sartell feels that they want to have a say over. An understanding of who we're looking at that will directly interact with them on public safety. And I think that, you know, some people look at almost as an elected, you know, some places, that, that's an elected official, but. Um, I think, yes, we should probably broaden that description from. Director to fire or police chief, however.
Public safety chief level hirings, I'm just looking at the.
Or like, could you put in parentheses? Or equivalent, public safety directors or equivalent as.
Why don't we just call out fire chief, police chief?
That was Jed's recommendation. Cuz they are, that is, I mean, that's.
Yeah, true.
Um, the other one that I think about there is. Finance director, I mean, I think about us as a council. You know, is it two three, two four? Like, so much of the decisions we make are finance-related. That is a third role that I feel is not, while it's not public-facing. It has a significant impact on the community and the council. Like, there's a level of, of trust and confidence that the council has to have in that role. Um, and so I just, well, Rob, I hope we never have to go through that. I think about it as, I don't know how I would gain confidence by having. A finance director approval provided to us in a consent agenda item. And then I'm gonna build confidence somehow with them.
Yep.
And so, like, honestly, to me, I, I, I think we almost could go back to how that was. When it's the head of a department, but the three specifically that I would be keen on would be. The fire chief, police chief, and our head of our finance, whatever that role, if it is different than finance director.
Finance chief.
Sure, I made that statement, know that hopefully your director positions you're hiring for not very often. So I don't think it's that big a deal, or I think it'd be important to have council involved in all those director positions. If you had twenty across the board, and it's every two months you're switching those, then obviously, no, but I think, yeah, it doesn't happen very often. In, in the best cases.
I think where you'd see the biggest difference, and this is your guys' decision, not mine, it's, but it is the public input piece. Like, you're probably not gonna have a ton of public showing up to meet your, no offense, Bobby, to meet your finance director. But they definitely want to meet your police and fire chief, for sure, absolutely, and so. Maybe that's the difference, is that council's always involved, no matter what, public is invol- is involved on the public safety, fire chief.
But part of our conversation earlier was that council would only be involved at public safety.
Right, that's how it's worded right now.
Yeah, and, and to Alex's point, and, and I would make the same point, is I think col- all of council should be involved in all. Head of department roles from a hiring.
Yep.
Like, your point's well taken, when it's, when it's public engagement, there's probably two areas that they really focus on. But, I, I mean, I even think, you know, I don't know what the future you envision is for public works, but at some point, like.
Involving council, yep.
Yeah. Sorry, Stacy.
What rest of you council members think about that? And, and does anybody have any policy language adjustments? Like, specific words that you want to put forward, so we've captured it here?
Well, the only thing I'll say about all city council members being involved in those hires. Is just the, the coordination of five different additional people to, I mean, if you're trying to expeditiously hire somebody. Or it, it does create a longer process, um, I'm not saying that's a bad thing, but it's, it's. You know, I think the way it's worded here is like, um, where did you have it? At least one representative in the hire, in the hiring process for none.
You basically have to split the council.
Yeah.
Which is fine, or you do a.
I, I mean, you use the word expeditiously, and I'm not sure if that was intentional on it, but I, I hope we don't find ourselves having to expeditiously hire a.
A director.
No, no, it just, no, I mean, it just delays things, um.
Potentially.
Which is not, I'm not saying it's a, I'm just pointing it out as a point, that it is hard to coordinate, but.
It is, and we've, and we've had challenges, I, I think back, um, I think it was Anna's hiring, we had some challenges of people being able to get off. To do the interview. People being able to get off to do the interview. And I I also think like. We could navigate that, but as it sits today, as it reads today, council doesn't have involvement. And I would rather us lean into council having involvement at that senior level role, and if there's areas where. Schedule wise, it just doesn't work, we deal with that. Um, but I, gosh, I I hope we don't see. I really hope we don't see turnover in these roles, um, it'll happen, we're kind of going through a phase now, but.
So Ryan, what specific language would you change in two point seven then?
Um, I would combine. Two, seven, two, uh, one, and two, seven, two, two. Maybe I just delete out two, seven, two, one.
And then, but then I also think we need to add a.
And then we would need to add.
The public input piece.
Public input specific to police chief, fire chief.
So it's really, you're still having two categories, you're just changing it to, you know, department head level, I think that's the. Term to use instead of director, cause then there's a, there's, it's just really clear.
And then you change two, seven, two, two to police chiefs, police chief, fire chief. And just specifically talk about public engagement.
Where did finance go?
There, they'd be a part of all department head level.
Public doesn't want to be engaged there.
And I think about the times that we had the public involved with the chief and the.
Oh, for sure.
Yeah.
The fire, fire chief and police chief, and they they were very appreciative.
That's critical, uh, yeah.
Does this need to? Draw any, cause in the personnel policy, right, you have. All director has to go external first?
Yeah, that that was one thing that I wanted to bring up with all of you, um. And so I'm glad you brought it up, is it's silent right now on, right now it's in. That statement around external of director level hiring, right now it just says. The way we're wording it is that it be department heads, so let's take director out of it, department head, and then we've got the public input piece covered. What if it's a department head hiring that is. Not necessarily an external position, either because of budgetary reasons or because of workload reasons. Now, keep in mind that the personnel policy says. What you just mentioned, which we wholeheartedly have gotten behind and support, and I I, but keep in mind that that now becomes my policy. Our policy, and so the personnel policy, that could go get changed, and is that really, like you haven't put a boundary around that in here. Like what is your intent on how you want to see me handle? If there's a, a hiring of a department head level position. And whether they should be internal, external, I did pick Jed's brain on it because I, um, I wanted to make sure I had his input. His input for me from the the credit union side as a CEO was at all costs whenever possible. He goes external, just because it gives you. A look at what other candidates are out there, but also sometimes you learn things in those interviews that are really creative options and ideas that you maybe haven't had perspective on before. The times when he doesn't is when it's a really specific expertise that he has in-house, like maybe it's an IT or something, and it's. Or and they've been groomed, and you're like, this is, we're not gonna go find this elsewhere, and this person has got this really, really, really specific expertise, a certification, a licensure, or something of a sort. Or a budgetary thing, like there's not an actual position there, and so then it would just be completely disingenuous. To go out and post a position when you have absolutely zero plan to hire them. But right now, you guys are silent on it, and the only spot that it speaks to it is in the. Personnel policy, which is an administrative policy, and I just, I want to make sure that you guys have a s- have a. You know, out of bounds flag on this one, cause I think it is important, and we we saw it come up in the police chief hiring. So I did pick um Jed's brain on it, and then, and I shared his feedback on that, but.
I do, and that's one I had is, um, I I would like to see it built in, um. It, council still has flexibility that if in the. In the rarer occasion, there's an internal with a very specific. Like council can make the decision to say, hey, through recommendation, we could say, yes, we agree with their recommendation, we wouldn't go external here, or we would. I think we have to post in most even internal, but um, my point is. I think we stay the course on how we've been doing it, and where exceptions need to be made, we make those as a one-off rather than. Put every word into this that we can possible, to try and cover every potential scenario that will come up. Other thoughts?
No, I would agree with both your and Jed's points that.
How does that play out practically? So let's say there's an opening and you think you have somebody internal. But per your personnel policy, the initial step would be to. Outside of the procedural piece, it would be to prepare to go external. So practically, that would mean you'd have to come to council and.
Yeah, Stacy, how would that work? Cause I'm basically asking to be out of compliance with the policy, and I'm a type A rule follower, and I don't like that. So.
I'm not sure.
I, cause practically speaking. I would have to come to council to post the position, and like hire, and the job description would have to come forward to council, and I would have to make the request to post it. And at that point on the council memo, I would justify why I believe it should be internal versus external, but by doing that, I'm gonna put myself out of compliance with. Whatever provision you have, unless you put some wording in there of like exceptions at the approval of, you know.
But I guess I look at it as you're out of compliance at a single point in time. This isn't out of compliance ongoing like many, most of the others are until it's fixed. This is a single point in time where council would would authorize to be out of compliant for. Extinguating circumstances, and as soon as that hire is made, or as soon as that action is taken, we're. It's not in compliant or out of compliant because that event's done.
So you're recognizing the transition period.
I mean, that's why this one's challenging, because it's an event that'll take place and not an ongoing process.
Yeah, the the intent. And I think the spirit of the council and and sharing Jed's feedback is that at, whenever possible, go external. But there, but also giving me the latitude if it's related to. A budget or workload or expertise area. That I can have that latitude without being out of compliance, but I don't know how you'd word that, but.
In your interpretation or in the policy?
In the policy itself, so that I don't put myself out of compliance by.
I I don't think you worded. I don't think you try and create the situation where you will be compliant in the. I'll start over, I I think you, I think we focus on uh, the going external. And if there's a situation where we can't go external, that's where we talk about the extending any circumstances, not, not in here. Because any other policy that you're not in compliant with. You need to notify council as soon as you know you're not gonna be compliant. And council at the next. Scheduled time talks about, are we okay with that not being compliant or being, or what steps are we taking to be compliant? Like that's that. Single event that we've talked about.
Is that how that would work, Stacy?
Yeah, I mean, and remember that sometimes. Being out of compliance isn't a bad thing.
Right.
It's just a thing, it's it's recognizing the current reality. And so if you're reporting on that and you're in this transition zone, or however, Ryan, you phrased it. The council looks at it and goes, yep, get why, and you move on, so. Don't think, Anna, that out of compliance is always a horrible stain on your reputation, reputation.
So then the wording would be. Department head hirings would be external, and just leave it as that.
Or the first priority is that all hirings be external?
I think what she says.
Default would be?
Say that again, Stacy?
The.
The 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 priority approach would be external hiring, I I'm just, again, looking for a little bit of latitude. I hear what you're saying, Ryan, but boy, that all or nothing.
Okay, so department head hirings priority approach would be, would be to include external, an external search process.
But I feel that. Puts our current staff. At a disadvantage in a sense that they don't feel like they're being prioritized.
I I look at, sorry.
Go ahead.
I I mean, I I look in in the room with uh, Brandon hiring. Like, our focus on going external.
Was the greater.
Is what created an opportunity for Brandon to apply at the city.
Agreed.
Now, as it played out, there was no internal applicants, but I believe. Strongly, and I I this is where Jed comes from as well, is that an internal applicant should have. The advantage in all the interview process, they know the processes, they know the policies, they they know so much about that. That an external coming in has to overcome all of that.
And we had this discussion exactly, when we were trying to decide, you know, how do we do that?
I wholeheartedly one hundred and twenty-five percent agree with that, when there is a vacant full position. Where I have some heartburn, and it just is gonna be up to me to justify in my, my council memo to you guys of. Why I wouldn't recommend that approach. If if the workload isn't there for a full-time external candidate, or the budget isn't there because we want to use those resources elsewhere. I don't want to go post an external posting and waste. Our time, taxpayer dollars, or candidates' times when there is zero intent to hire an external candidate, like that feels really. Icky, but then it's up to me to explain to you guys of why we're not using that priority approach. And lay out the workload and the budget and expertise or whatever it might be.
And that memo practically, that memo comes to council before you would.
Hire.
Waste your time going external, right, so.
I'd have a job description.
I can't, I shouldn't go external here, you would present to council why, and if council agrees, great, if council disagrees. Then you'd spend the effort to go external.
Now, how does that play out if? So let's say that scenario, and you have a specific person in mind. And I almost have to spell that out and include it, but then now you've basically, I've gone to council and said, here's my hand. But now I'm still gonna go do a hiring, I'm I'm still gonna do an interview.
Which is, which is part of the reason why when we first talked about two, seven, two, I believe. Council as a whole should be involved in that early and not at the end, because as you're highlighting. In your mind right now, you're having council at the end of the rope when, hey, a decision's already been made.
Like you're gonna, that council memo's gonna come with a name on it. Before you've done an interview. Cause I can't post for it.
Or you could engage council earlier in the process. So you would potentially do a lot of work and lead to a conclusion saying, hey, there's, for this reason or that reason. We're not gonna actually fill it as we see it today, here's what my recommendation would be, and if that's council's first interaction on that. Then, yeah, it sets up for some super uncomfortable, there's a name out there, there's, and if it gets voted down, then. But that's where I'm suggesting council should be at the, at the director, uh, department head should be earlier in that process. To prevent us from getting to a point where it's either a rubber stamp or it's not.
But how do I practically do that? Like.
It's gonna have to be early in the process, we can't have a name going out there and then shut.
But how do I? Like as a, at a, I can't have a meeting with you guys without all of you, and so I do that as like an education item and talk about it. Cause I, it it's gonna be, there's a person associated with it.
Can you use your incidental report?
Well, I mean, that's part of the challenge we're finding ourselves in, we need to figure out, previously, that was all done with any personnel committee. Uh, with intention, but.
What if it's engaged at a, at a workshop level like we are now, or it can be the models given, but no names are given? And we're, you know, we're working on some things right now that that may be.
Yeah, that was where my head was initially at, is like it's an education item where I walk through different models, but.
Cause I wouldn't want you to put, unintentionally, I wouldn't want you to put council in a position where. It's personal then, when a name comes out, it then becomes personal that you're asking council to vote for or against. Council should be at a different level of saying, structurally, here's how we think we should do things differently. And because of that, we wouldn't go external? Do you agree or disagree with that? Not, hey, do you agree or disagree with the person that I'm looking to put here?
Yeah, you just have internal candidates that should be considered.
Yeah, no, I can wrap my head around that, it's, it'll be a little funky, but I think. I think a workshop setting as an educational item. Presenting, you know, when Jed and I talked about that, this, he was like, you you need to present all the options you've considered, and then your final recommendation. Of what that structure looks like, and then it, it comes back to council. On an agenda item with the job description. And the recommendation for an internal hire. But then it still needs an interview process and a. I'll get there. Okay, tho- that was uh, the area that Jed gave feedback on as well, so.
So are you all clear about what you've tracked in terms of wording changes in the actual policy?
I think Anna took some really good notes, and we'll probably get that back.
Yeah, I'll have to redline it, but I mean, there'll be, there'll be three sections, there's gonna be the public input for. Uh, police chief and fire chief, there's gonna be the department head hiring. Including multiple perspectives on the interview panel piece of it, and then there'll be the. Department head hirings priority approach would be to include an external search process. Got it.
Council, other two, seven items. See no from Jill, see no from Alex. Um, I had one other, which is two, seven, two, seven, three. Uh, city administrator compensation and benefits. As I. Get my bearings, as I read the interpretation, I have concern, and I think we may need to. Change the policy slightly, um, as I'm reading it. It states that city administrator would put any changes on a consent agenda item?
Well, the finance director would put it on the consent agenda item, anything related to the city administrator, maybe. Maybe that's written poorly.
Well, and so. Either way, how it gets there, my, the point I would make on this and the concern I have is that. We've really honed in on the scope of that consent agenda to be routine. Um, and in most cases delegated consent items. There's that, I mean, that to me has a big conflict of. The finance director who reports to the admin would put their boss's compensation on the consent agenda to be approved by council.
So this is one of the areas of the four twelve. That you've delegated. To, and not just in the city administrator aspect, but like you guys have to approve anything related to hiring, firing, compensation for all. To, and not just in the city administrator aspect, but like you guys have to approve anything related to hiring, firing, compensation for all employees. And so. That historically, not saying, but historically that has always gone on consent of any employee, not necessarily. But maybe the city administrator should be separate.
And that's where I see that as, I mean, this one I'm reading as specific to city administrator, not all other employees. So specific to city administrator, I do think it should follow a different path and. I don't know if that's part of the year-end review or whatnot, but. To me, it doesn't align with how we've defined our consent agenda items. I don't see any category in consent where it would fit under by definition.
So do you see this as an action item?
It's, it's consistent with every other employee though. Falling under consent.
Yep, every other employee but that top CEO position. I mean practically, right? Anna's gonna ask Rob to put her compensation on consent. And is it delegated consent or is it?
Yeah, it'd be a delegated consent. And that is what we've done in the past, like he does all of the compensation. Including his own technically, but you list out all the compensation levels and I'm just trying to play out in my head like. And it's, I have a contract, so it's not like there's. But you're gonna have that as an action item and like talk about my pay exclusively as an action item? That feels a little, but that'd be the only other spot on the agenda, so.
Yeah, I don't know if it's, if it's a new business item, I think it aligns better in the, if it can fit within your review process.
That's what I would feel like if you more of the review, everything quote unquote is breed upon and comes to consent for approval.
So maybe that's what has to be added in there is that. As established by the city council during a closed performance review meeting. And approved at a future consent, you know, the provision.
We've got to, I mean, your role is different than any ver- any other role in the, in the city and as. I mean, again, as our only employee.
But with the terms, I mean, if we're having a closed session for her performance review, correct? This would be changes coming out of that discussion? Potentially?
Right, and so that's.
So we've all been pervy to that discussion already. So do we need to take that as an action item? I guess, I mean, not an action.
Well, you'd need an, you'd need a motion and an approval at some point.
But I'm saying, is it something that we need to put on our new business if we've?
At that point, I would have comfort in having on consent because council's already reviewed it. As it's worded now, council wouldn't review it at all, it would just be on consent.
So that's where you're saying you need to add the fervor to got it, okay?
Yeah, so I'm adding, I'll read it to you in a second.
I would rather have it structured that way where council will review it versus having. If we follow this, it's gonna be on consent and one of five is likely to pull it and it becomes a topic anyways. So I'd rather us be intentional about it.
So have it read, change your own compensation and benefits as established by the city council during a close performance review meeting. And later approved under the consent agenda.
Is there comfort there?
Got it.
Ryan, I'm just looking at the clock and wondering if it makes sense to jump down to communication and support.
Yeah, any other, I don't think there's any other two sevens. Uh, two, eight? Is that the?
So two, eight is the actual one that'll be coming next. Do we wanna quick go do two point one and two point two before we? Move to the actual draft? That's all we have left.
Did anyone have two, one?
Uh, I just had a question on two, one, two.
Two, one, two.
When you're talking about. Secure, well, accessibility and privacy, which I glean to be security too on public works and public. Safety facilities. Um, are systems like computer systems, like the water system and sewer system, are those? Captured separately elsewhere?
So.
Cause you're kinda talking just about interpreting it to be physical space, not.
That's a great. It might be another area where needs some expansion, cause like I write in there two water treatment plants in my mind and ten lift stations. In my mind, that includes the SCADA system associated with them, cause they're assets within those buildings, but I think I need to expand on that. Two, what was that? Two, seven or two?
Two, one, two. Yeah, that's a good call.
Uh, none on two, one.
Anything else on two, one? Two, two?
And this one will be coming to you in January, so you will see this one sooner rather than later.
Anything on two, two?
I wrote down two, two, but then there is no note.
I've got two, two, seven. And it's, uh, co- related employees conflict of interest. In other documents, we expand conflict of interest beyond just direct related parties. So in the top there, we talk about, um, related and relationship, but I think it was the. Interpretation, I don't think talks about that. I think the interpretation only talks about related.
So you're saying it doesn't look like the interpretation is complete, Ryan?
Yep.
Yep, so it says a relation, in the interpretation, it says a relationship is defined. As a relative who's an individual related by blood or affinity. Whose close association with the employee is equivalent of a family relationship. And so. It's whether that is a reasonable interpretation of being in a relationship or related.
Yeah, and I believe the, where I don't think it's complete is, is we are, the interpretation is honing in on.
Just relationship.
Just rel- just related or family. Uh, versus a relationship.
Okay, so two point two. Got it.
Yeah, I'm not sure what that.
What is that? What was your interpretation of affinity?
You have affinity towards something.
Yeah, so you're in a relationship.
Yeah, it's defining, I, I see where he heads at. Yep, I got that.
Any other two, twos?
Okay, so then.
Then we're at two, eight to wrap it up.
Let me open that, if you wanna go back in the folder, Rob, and open. The draft review of two, eight, so this is the. Final. Um, and Stacy, this is my first time presenting an actual. Draft review of a monitoring report, um, and this would come to council at the next regular December ninth meeting is when it's due. So you can see the cover page, keep in mind that this monitoring report is only from activation to the date of the monitoring report. So it's, it's October fourteenth to December ninth, so it's a significantly smaller window for this. But the next go around, just kind of envision what this will look like for a solid year. Of course, right now, we're only talking about a two-month time period and so compliance is a little bit easier. Um, and so you can see that they are all in compliance, um, for that time period, October fourteenth to December ninth. One thing. That I do wanna call out is the data associated at the end. Of the report and just help wrap your heads around what I'll be tracking throughout the year. Related to two point eight, so first I am required to track that these are submitted in a timely way. And that they ultimately achieve approval and so. I have a spreadsheet there to show the, the workshop date, the regular meeting. I'm required to submit it ten days in advance of your regular meeting and then have to acknowledge council acceptance and approval. And so I'll eventually check that box, but by the time you get this report the next time, this should all be filled out. It's just that right now, it's only since October fourteenth.
And I'll add in here a reminder, council members, about how unique the communication and support EL. Is compared to the others simply by the nature of it being much more subjective. When you look at the compliance indicator plan. For example, uh, the compliance indicator number two, the majority of the council members agree that the reports are understandable. Accurate and directly assess, address the provisions. That's a subjective thing. So Ryan, when you're planning the time necessary to do the assessment. Next month, give yourself more time because there's gonna have to be some conversation. And that may not be the case for, it's likely not the case for other ELs that don't have that subjective nature to them. Does that make sense, everyone?
Yep.
Does the ten days prior? Make sense to everyone? And Stacy, is that like just standard or, I'm just trying to play out, like you would technically get this. With council packets, which would be.
Three days.
Yeah. And so I'm gonna have to, I'll have to send it separate and you guys will get it as a separate item, is that, you're good with that? Okay.
I think that would be the desire. Otherwise.
It gets buried.
We have a large council meeting or a large packet and then this on top of it. Um, I don't know that it'll allow people to digest it enough.
So the next spreadsheet is the non-compliance alert, so like this would be an area where I would, you know, if, if we had. Talking about that external search process, like this is, if there was an area where I was out of compliance, this would be where I'd have to put it and track those throughout the whole year. The next one is council policy compliance, so I have to track if there's non-compliance of council within their own policies. The next one, and these are kind of interesting to do, um, and we've been really working hard at a department head level of just making sure that our. The decision information we're providing to you includes all of these areas and not omitting anything. So tracking that for every single one, so that will be a long spreadsheet when you look at one year's worth. Tracking that I've done an incidental report for you every week and if you didn't get one, the reason for it. Um, like a vacation or so on and so forth. The information clarity one was kind of interesting to me, Tim, I think you've talked about this before of like, sometimes we get a little lengthy in. Our explanations. So this lays out all of the memos that you've received and then the length of the memo, just so that you can notice like, is there one on there that's? Twelve pages long, like why in the heck was that? Cause the intent is that we're giving you the amount of information that you need to make a decision, but not too much information. The next report is around adequate information, so again, checking the boxes to make sure that we have included multiple perspectives. And then. Communication to the council. This is if a council member is. Essentially utilizing too much of staff time or trying to direct staff members, like I'm required to report compliant. Or report incidents where that might be happening.
Is that different than the other where?
Maybe out of compliance. It's just a different data, I really could probably use the same data measure for both of those. And then consent agenda, making sure that enough information is provided on the consent agenda items so that you guys. Really the goal is that you don't have to pull those items, cause you feel like you've gotten enough information that you can support them. Um, and so then tracking, like I put on here, knowing that this item would get, five D would get pulled to abstain. Just due to conflict of interest, so calling that out. But if you guys start to notice that a ton of consent agenda items are getting pulled, cause they don't have the information you need, like I have to report that.
At the risk of going into the weeds on this. Do you have a area where you would, you had given us two options going forward with the fire? One being abstaining and the other one being, what was the term?
Disqualifying.
Disqualified, would that be called out here?
Yeah, that would get called out here. You, on the end where I wrote abstaining due to conflict of interest, I would just write disqualifying for personal interest. Is I think all I have to word that or how that motion would have to be. And so I'd have to identify that here so that, the intent is that, you know, you're gonna look at one whole year of this and not just two months.
We'll help you with that one, Tim.
And so you guys can start to notice like, okay, we're missing on consent agenda items. Hopefully it's a really short list. But that is the data to go with each of the. Two point eight point one through two point eight point ten provisions above. Stacy, is there anything else we're supposed to do as we review this draft? Monitoring.
No, same, same questions. Your focus tonight is on the interpretations, including the measurement plans. And you're just asking yourselves together, is this reasonable? Especially given the subjective nature on it.
Anyone have any two point eights? Uh, I had one is two point eight point three. Um, which is council policy compliance. Just from a. Board leadership. I guess my, my ask from a. From the council is. So if, if we're asking the administrator to email a council members who aren't compliant. My ask would be that the, the mayor CC'd on that so that there's awareness to what's happening. If it's going to the mayor, then I would say that the acting mayor should be CC'd. Um, and that. I think does two things, one is, um, allows another member on the board to understand what is taking place in the moment. But also keeps the administrator, um, out from that one-on-one with a council member or back and forth.
So Stacy, how do we? Does that require a change to the provision? Right now.
To the provision or the policy? Yeah, are you talking about two eight three?
Yeah, yeah, two, eight, three, like would we need to actually change the language to include something in there about that? Or can we just be somewhat informal about that understanding?
My inclination would be to be a bit more informal.
Never thought you'd say that.
I didn't either, I did not think that was coming.
We are past our time. Yeah, at this point, it's all informal.
Uh, I got it.
Anything else on two, eight? Seeing no?
Good job, guys.
Stacy, what did we miss?
You all really did a great job tonight. I don't, you didn't miss a thing. I never thought you'd get through all of this tonight, so congratulations.
Okay.
That's wonderful.
Don't leave yet though Stacy, cause I do have a question.
I'm not going anywhere.
We want the, one of the last items before we get to round tables is council self-assessment. On their governance process and council administrator delegation. I mean, it's only been like a month and a half, but I have no idea what that is. I mean, I know what it is in the policies, but how do they self-assess that?
Well, you've got a survey that you've already developed, correct Anna?
Um, I think there's forms in, in your binders where you can go through and kind of mark and self-assess how your meetings are going and how your communication is going. Yep, so they just need to.
Yeah, I might consider council members while it's on the schedule for the month of November. Yeah, I might consider council members while it's on the schedule for the month of November. To either move it to six months from now and use it as a checkpoint. Or you could do it a year from now, cause you're so early.
Yeah.
In this process, you're just not even, you haven't even gained traction yet. Um, so I might suggest you put it down the road a little bit. And then absolutely, use the survey tool where you're assessing your own performance. Against your governance process qua- quadrant policies and, and those that are, are key in the, uh, council administrator delegation. And do an assessment of the council as a whole, so you're looking at yourself and you're looking at yourselves collectively. But I don't think it makes sense to do it yet, it's too early.
I might advocate that we do it in six months, uh, rather than a year, just thinking we'll have three of us that have gone through a decent amount. Two that are new and it'd be a good intentional checkpoint for the council at that time to say. How are we doing? And again, we're gonna have people at different levels.
Yeah.
Be intentional about it.
I'm sure Alex and Jill will make it back for that, just to give their two cents of what they've been monitoring over the six months.
Especially if we do it at like eight forty-five at night.
These kids will be in bed. Okay, so I will move that on my calendar for six months from now, just so that we have a check it, checkpoint. And then that'll be good to Stacy, cause you'll still be engaged, so that, that will help. Okay. Got it.
Uh, are we done with item seven then?
I'm good.
Council round tables. Tim.
All right, do you need me anymore, or may I duck out, folks?
I think you're good, Stacy, we're, we're, thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
We're good to go.
Take care, everyone.
Have a good night.
Bye now.
Bye.
Alex, let's start with you for council round tables. Okay, keep thinking, Tim, we'll get to you, Jill?
Nothing.
Tim.
I'll, I'll defer, do you have anything, right?
No.
Okay, then I don't either.
Should I've had something? It's a Stacy move right there. Um, look for a motion to adjourn. I'll make a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.